Good evening. Welcome to the February 8, 2021 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you will stand with us, please Commissioner Lee Bogel will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come this afternoon, this evening, and conduct business for the county. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon this county, this state, and this nation, that we can take time to look at those blessings and keep working forward together. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over what we discuss here tonight, and we find that you find that pleasing in your sight, and that we can do what's best for the majority of citizens of this county. Watch over our physicians as they take care of us and distribute vaccines, and watch over our emergency services and military as they protect us and watch over us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission being conducted pursuant to Governor Bill's Lee Executive Order 16, I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Your response, Commissioners, will be not only a roll call, but will also be your consent to conduct this meeting electronically. Gail?
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Penyon?
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Aberwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have no minutes to approve. We have no items withdrawn or deferred, thank goodness. We'll get right into our business. Item 6A, this is an item that's on our schedule for a rezoning request. Item 6AA, REZ 21-002, Stephen Pierce for NRV Incorporated. Location is 4871 Lebanon Pike. Commission District is 14. The county commissioner is Virgil Gammon. Size of the site is approximately 57 acres. Tax map is 47. The existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. The proposed zoning is for PUD, Planned Unit Development for Residential Subdivision. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, Commission members. This particular application, as Mr. Phillips stated, is located along Lebanon Pike. The applicant plans to construct 180 townhome units on the subject property. Based on the current zoning, which is stated as RM, which is a single-family zone, minimum 15,000 square foot lot size, a gross density calculation of this, if you just took the acreage and divided it by 15,000 square feet, would be about 165 units. Now, that's not realistic, and most of us pretty much know that. When you look at a more reasonable density for this development, when you start considering right-of-way easements, detention, those kind of things, you're looking probably more along the line somewhere between 100, 110 units or so. So just to give you just a rough idea about that. The townhome units would be in four-unit clusters. Each four-unit lot would be a minimum of 12,720 square feet, with sublots having a minimum of 4,240 square feet. Each sublot would be owned as part of the unit. These would be zero lot lines. So basically, they'd have a four-unit structure, and then they'd have lot lines split down the middle. Typical unit footprints would be a minimum of 1,120 square feet, with a total gross floor area of just right under 2,000 square feet. They would all be two-story, contain a minimum of three bedrooms. There would be a minimum of 40 feet between each four-unit cluster, and the elevations are shown to be of vinyl construction. Some of the units towards the front of the property, closer to Lebanon Pike, are going to have their backs toward Lebanon Pike. Staff did ask about any consideration of the appearance of those elevations. The applicant is proposing landscape buffering in this area to help screen the rear elevations from Lebanon Pike. I will call your attention also to the pattern book, which is on your iPads for additional information. As with any PUD, a neighborhood meeting was held due to the pandemic. We did hold it virtually, right before the holidays, December the 7th. Only the applicant, the property owner, and a member of the staff, who was myself, actually, were in attendance at that meeting. As was stated, the development does have access to Lebanon Pike, which is also State Route/US 231. Streets constructed will be public, right-of-way. There is a proposed stubout to the west into an adjacent Murphysboro City Development, which there's an attached plan in your agenda packet showing where that connection would be. The timing of the connection is unknown at this point, and there are no connections currently either to the north or to the south, which is into the adjacent Roland Estates subdivision. The main road going through this development is divided by a roundabout between Phases 1 and 2, which should help reduce some traffic speeds. We did have some concerns about the location of the access drive onto Lebanon Pike and potential visibility along the north side of the property. The applicant did submit a visibility, staff, visibility study, I should say. Staff has reviewed that. I'll let Mike provide some more comments on that when I'm finished with my brief presentation here. They've also submitted a traffic study with the application that does recommend turn lanes from Lebanon Pike into the proposed development. The pattern book also states that each unit would be able to accommodate two cars, one in a driveway and one in the garage for Phase 1. Phase 2 does provide longer driveways, as you can see in the pattern book. They can accommodate two cars plus the garage for a total of three. We've informed the applicant of our concerns, especially in Phase 1. The shalliness of these front setbacks, especially in Phase 1, is only slightly longer than a typical parking spot. We want to make sure that we don't see, of course, wherever there's a sidewalk, we don't want to see the cars backing out and, you know, sticking out into the sidewalk. Residential PUDs are generally not required to provide buffering adjacent to residentially zone properties, but are required to provide a minimum of 10% open space, with half of that being usable. Multifamily developments, this is really more akin to that, are required to provide a Type 1 buffer adjacent to single-family area. You'll see a note on page 10 of the pattern book that indicates a certified auburist will perform a site visit and verify potential locations where supplemental vegetation may be necessary. They are showing approximately 10 and 1/2 acres of open space, with about 5 and 1/2 of that being usable, and performance standards would not apply to this particular development as it is residential. One other note I did want to make on the parking and of cars on site. Throughout the development, you'll see that there are several smaller parking areas, which could accommodate additional cars, visitors, and things like that. I meant to mention that earlier, just left that out. Did want to bring that to your attention. With that, the applicants are present, and I believe they have a brief presentation to make, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions before getting into their presentation or the public hearing.
Any questions for staff at this time? The applicant present, you have a presentation you'd like to make? Come forward, please.
Let me just make sure it works. Tell us when you want to go to the next slide. It's not lighting up for some reason.
It's going to be short because you hit on all the major points. So, my name is Grant Shiring. I'm with PVE. I am representing the applicant, which is NVR. Just a small correction for the record. Stephen Pierce is no longer with NVR. So, Mr. Davis Lamb, who is here tonight as well, will be representing NVR. So if you could just go to the PowerPoint presentation, what I'll do...
It's not going to show up on your iPad. It's on the big screen.
Okay, great, great. Okay, then what I'm going to do is I'm just going to shorten up my presentation...
Before you start, anybody having trouble hearing him? Y'all okay? Okay. If you would speak up just a tad.
Can you repeat your name, please?
Am I allowed to take this off?
Yes.
Okay. Repeating my name, my name is Grant Shiring with PVE. So I will just hit on a couple items that Mr. Demossi had spoken about. First, this on the screen right now is the overall conceptual site plan with the access shown on Lebanon Pike. The units, as soon as you enter the community, off to the left is a cul-de-sac. The units that Mr. Demossi was talking about, as far as their backs facing Lebanon Pike, are located there. We will be providing a landscape buffer in that location, both for privacy of those units and also to buffer the views for motorists that are passing along Lebanon Pike, so they cannot see the backyards of those townhomes. So it offers privacy, and it breaks up the views for motorists coming through. As far as the roundabout, the roundabout is located here at the midpoint of the development. That serves two functions. First, it helps with traffic coming. Second, it's a midpoint turnaround for both emergency vehicles and for school buses. One of the reasons that it was located in that specific location is that there is a 75-foot wide TVA easement, shown on the screen now. So it made sense to locate that. Not only is the midpoint of our community, but also nothing else can occur over that easement, so that is where we are going to place the roundabout. In terms of pattern book and the parking that was being mentioned, the graphic on the screen right now shows exactly where Mr. Demossi was talking about, the two types of units. So there are units shown in blue. Those units are Phase 2, and those units have a 40-foot setback. So those are where they will have two cars within the driveway and one car within the garage. The units that are in yellow, those units will have a 20-foot setback. There are parking lots, there are three parking lots, two with 20 spaces and one with 16, so there's a total of 56 parking spaces there. Four of the units that are in yellow that only have, they have the one space within the driveway, and then one space within the garage. There were multiple discussions about concerns with parking, and we went through multiple options in a way we can try and provide guest parking space. This seemed to be the best option because of one factor, and that we have to have a step system, and the most viable soils for the step system are what are identified in blue. So as you can see, the units in the rear of the development have the space where we can increase the setback and not disturb those viable soils. The units in Phase 1, located here, we cannot increase the setback, or else we are encroaching into the best soils on the site for the step system. This graphic also shows our open space. So the orange is what identifies our general open space, and then the yellow is our usable open space. There are three locations for the usable open space, here, here, and here. Off of the roundabout is where we will have a playground, and if you can also see on the screen, from that playground, there would be a walking trail. The other two park spaces that I identified would be passive park spaces. And I believe that is hitting on everything I wanted to clarify. Up on the screen right now, it's just a quick graphic to show the setbacks for the two types of units, and it shows how a vehicle could park there without encroaching onto the sidewalk. Just to note, the 20-foot setback and the 40-foot setback are off the right-of-way line. So there is an additional four feet until you hit the sidewalk, so that we can ensure that those vehicles will not conflict on the sides where a sidewalk is located. So just noting on sidewalks on the screen right now, you can see the sidewalks are highlighted in red. So with that, I think that I will conclude my comments, and then just address any comments or questions that you guys have.
Questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chairman, this is Charlotte.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner P.
I have, I commend you on your plan with the sidewalks and the extra parking places. My question is, how wide is the road? We know that garages are going to be filled, and cars will be parked in the road. And my question is, is the road wide enough, if cars are parked on both sides, can a school bus get through, or a fire truck get through?
So the roads will meet county standards. It would be a 50-foot public right-of-way, and then I believe that the cart path is required to be 24 feet?
Two 11-foot lanes.
Two 11-foot, so 22 feet. Now, I'm not sure, is parking even permitted within the county on roads?
Strongly discouraged, in...
If it's discouraged, I would say we're providing two spaces for the units in the rear and driveways, and then the additional guest parking spaces that are dispersed throughout will hopefully be the locations where people park. There's three parking lots that are as evenly distributed throughout, so we don't have any long lengths for people to walk, so that it hopefully pushes them to use those spaces. And those parking lots are also located on where sidewalks are. So that movement from going to a guest parking space to a unit that you're visiting, we hope, is easy, and it prevents people from parking on the street.
Let me just kind of point out, some of the history that we have now with some of our PUDs are a little concerning because of the congestion and mostly the parking. And not only are, let's say, a driveway can hold two cars, a garage is supposed to hold one or two cars, but in lots this size, the garage is used for anything and everything but a garage. It usually ends up being storage, and I'm not exaggerating. Most every time it will, which cuts, which reduces parking by at least one there, sometimes two, depending on the size of the garage, which means that people that own some of those units are, will have more than two cars, and they're going to start parking on the streets, and they'll be parking in front of other people's houses. And it's going to create an undesirable situation for the citizens in and around that area. I would like, as a planning commissioner, some assurances that parking will not be allowed on the street, since it's going to be a county-owned road at some point in time, correct?
Correct.
Is that possible?
I don't believe that I can give assurances that somebody will not park on the street. What I will say is that with the width of these units and where driveways are located, it is going to be difficult, because the units are only 20 feet wide, and then you're going to have driveway locations that are intersecting with the road. So why, won't sit here and deny that somebody won't try and fit something in there. If they did, they would be blocking a driveway. If it's strongly discouraged within the county, I can't say that somebody won't try and park there, but I believe that we are providing, with the parking lots and with the two spaces in the units, a reasonable number of parking spaces for this type of development.
Let me just add a little bit to that, and excuse me, Commissioners, if I'm saying too much, y'all correct me, and I'll shut up, that the parking is going to be an increasing issue as years go by. So we, I, would like this plan to be not only for building and for occupying, but for something that's going to be attractive for our community for the next 30 to 40 years. And that's the reason I'm asking for some assurances. Will this have an HOA?
It will.
Could they be put in the bylaws, no parking on the streets, subject to being towed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Believe that we can agree to that.
Mr. Chairman, what was the basis for calculation on those parking areas? Was it a calculation for accommodating one per unit, basically, or how many spaces are you providing there?
It was .5 per unit.
Okay. And the mail kiosk, I know that's probably something you may not have even dealt with at this point or not, but do you kind of have an idea where that's going, because that'll probably take up one of your parking areas for ingress egress?
Yes, so we have identified two locations for, and I'm sorry, I turned that on right when it was in your iPad, but it is, one location will be in this parking area, the other location will be in this parking area. Those cluster mailbox units will be off the backside of the sidewalk, and we have run that by the postal office, and they have agreed with the two locations. So this one will serve Phase 1, this one will serve Phase 2.
So with calculations including accommodation for the traffic that might be proposed, associated with the mail kiosk, I guess, or is it just strictly the .5 off of everything?
It was .5 off everything, so yes.
Because I know the mail kiosk may create a little bit of an issue. If the parking spaces are utilized and they are full, then what happens to those vehicles ingress egress out of there? I know the first one looks like it's a pass-through sort of situation. Looks like it has an entrance on each end, and the others may create an issue.
Correct. Acknowledged, it's a fair point.
Other questions for the applicant at this time?
Your building material is all vinyl?
Correct.
And one way in, one way out?
Of the unit or of the development?
Of the development.
Yes. At this time, yes, until this adjacent property to the west would develop. We have left a connection point for that right now. That's considered, we are considering that a temporary cul-de-sac.
Now, there, and that's what I was referring to a little earlier regarding that there's a city development, backs up right to that. Now, the timing of that connection is unknown. I do believe that developer of that property found some endangered flora back in that area, so they'll have to remediate that or work around it, but their plan was approved with a connection into this property at the location they're showing it. So there would be two ways to get in it eventually.
When complete, you're talking about 180 units, is that right?
Yes, sir.
183-bedroom units, is that correct?
Correct.
Get through, that's at least two cars per unit.
Fair to assume, yes.
The entrance coming into this, now you have everything that has, as far as state of Tennessee is concerned about entrance?
We have not submitted for our highway occupancy permit, is what I would call it, the access, but we will if we are able to secure rezoning. We have gone out and we have looked at site distance, which I believe the county's engineer is going to comment on further, but our consultant has shown that site distance is, we can't accommodate that in both directions. We will have a right turnout, a left turnout. Based on the trips that are generated within the development, our traffic impact study has said that Lebanon Pike will require a northbound left turn lane in, and then a right deceleration turn in. Again, if we are able to secure rezoning, we have hired a traffic consultant that is going to look at conceptual site plans to design those turn lanes, and we would pursue the necessary permits to obtain that improvement.
Other questions at this time?
Mr. Chair, Michael Kush here.
Hey, Mike.
I have a question for the applicant. If he could go back a slide or two, I have a question on his dimensioning on those short driveway townhouses. He mentioned that, I think the rendering showed a car in the driveway, and he mentioned that there was approximately four feet, I believe, left to the sidewalk. I'm curious, is if he can give the dimension from the garage door to that sidewalk? Where I'm trying to find out is, you know, what kind of car are they measuring? Is it a Volkswagen Beetle? Is it a F-150? Because I want to make sure the rear end of any vehicle is not protruding into a sidewalk.
Yes. You can't see the laser pointer, so I'll try and explain. There, the two cars, so the dimensions between the front setback line, the lighter yellow color, and the red line, the red line is the, will be the county right-of-way. On the Type 1, that is 20 feet. On the Type 2, that is 40 feet. Now, if you notice in front, there is a five-foot sidewalk there, and that distance from the curb to the red right-of-way line is 13 feet. So that sidewalk will be four feet off the curb, and then four feet from that red right-of-way line.
Okay, help me out, because on my screen, that picture is really blurry and hard for me to read. So from the front of that car, or say from the garage door, to the edge of the sidewalk, approximately, what kind of footage are we talking about? Is the length of that driveway to the...
On...
20 feet.
On Lot 1, from the front facade to the sidewalk, is 24 feet.
Or 20 feet by the dimension. Oh, to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk, and then on the cluster Lot 2, that's 44 feet.
Okay, so the short ones have a 24-foot driveway length, measured from the garage door to the beginning of the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, so if you even had a super cab truck and pulled to your grill two feet off your garage door, you still should have two feet before you encroach on the sidewalk?
Correct.
Because they measure 20, a little over 20 feet?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes me feel better.
Most parking standards for lots, I'm sorry, for commercial developments, parking lots is, the depth of a parking stall is 20 feet, and usually the drive aisle is 24 feet.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, when I was giving my presentation earlier, I mentioned that Mike had some comments, and I just kind of lost my train of thought and just finished up my presentation, never turned it over to Mike. Mike, I know has got some comments on some...
I didn't want to take up his time. If y'all had any more questions for Mr. Shiring?
Any more questions for the applicant at this time? Stay close. Mike?
Sir. Okay, let me get back to...
Sorry to interrupt. Should I stay up just in case?
No, 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 you're fine. You're fine. Well, on the map, you can see the property outlined in yellow, and as it was mentioned before by Douglas, this section of Lebanon Pike is what they call the proverbial between a rock and a hard place. You can see the east fork of the Stones River here. It swings very close to Lebanon Highway, and then on the north side, let me zoom out a little bit far, is a little cemetery, family cemetery, called the Black Family Cemetery, that's kind of in a little bend in the road. I guess it was a prominent elevation that the family started almost over 200 years ago. I think the first grave was 1819 that they mentioned, and I have a copy of that. Let's see if I can find that. Well, this is a photograph of it, and they've identified at least 18 graves in there, and like I said, the earliest one that they mentioned in the book goes back to 1819. Here it is. And this is from the cemeteries and graveyards of Rutherford County that the Historical Society put together back in 2005, and they mention, well, they list at least 18 graves, and the earliest one I have that I could see is from 1819. So that is going to be the rock, and then the hard place is going to be the river, right here. So what we have is this slight bend in the road, the cemetery that's, you know, you could move it, or you could do some things with it, but if, let me zoom in here, and I'll show you. Right at the edge of the shoulder... Right at the edge of the shoulder, and I'm sorry this is taking a while, the topography drops off pretty dramatically. You have from the edge of the shoulder to the right-of-way, two-to-one side slopes. So that's for every one foot vertical, two foot horizontal. And then from there, it drops down dramatically, steeper to the river. So right at the edge, and let me see if I can find, this is kind of a street view of the area. So here's the guardrail right at the entrance on the east side of Lebanon Pike. And then you can kind of see where it drops off dramatically down towards the river. And then the property is to the west here on this side. And there's one of the entrances of the, to the existing house, and then there's an adjacent driveway that the neighboring property also uses. So if you kind of look at... There's a, like I said, the cemetery is right in a slight bend of the road. So it's going to be a fixed position. And if we're talking about adding a northbound left turn lane, a southbound right turn lane, we're running out of real estate real fast. So what we've got to overcome is the steep slopes on the bank side and then also steep slopes on the property side. You've got not as dramatic, but it does go up several feet. So this is the existing driveway. I think they're going to move it a little bit farther to the north. So you're looking at about 12 feet in a short distance to get to the top of this, where the house is sitting right now. So it goes up pretty dramatically up here. The Black Family Cemetery is located in this just adjacent northeast corner of the property here. So considering tapers, the storage length, which side you're going to expand the turn lanes and keep the through lanes on either side, you know, it's going to be a challenge. I'm not going to say it's impossible. It's just going to be, like I said, between a rock and a hard place. I could envision a lot of retaining walls. You can see the cemetery. It's very steep right here. And if you've got an entrance here, it's going to be a challenge to get that taper and storage for a right turn lane and then also make enough room for a northbound left turn lane going into the site. So like I said, it's not impossible. It's just, it's going to be a challenge. Let me get back to street view. And like I said, they did do a study, but I'm not sure they factored in the turn lanes on that. And you can kind of see this slight bend. That's, the clump of trees is the cemetery. And if you look at it, coming from the north side, looking south, that's looking north, and I'll swing around. So it's, the cemetery is in this clump of trees up here. So it's, and you can see the road kind of curves to the right here. And... Oops. And my map seemed to have locked up. So patience and technology will grant you blessings and also curses. But what I'm saying is, whoops, there we go. Okay, let me get to the study before it crashes again. Okay. Here is the Site Triangle Study. And it's by Brandon Taylor and Drew Randolph of KCI Technologies. And they do a thorough investigation, looking at the site distance in and out. But I wanted to note one thing, as soon as I can get to the page. A photograph speaks a thousand words. And this is looking south, like I was talking about on Street View. So you can see the road curves to the right and they have a person standing here in a yellow vest and he is 14 feet off the edge of the travel lane. So typically, you've got a stop bar, four feet off the travel lane, and then another 10-foot back would be a person sitting in the middle of their car to see. But this person standing here doesn't account for a southbound right turn lane and a northbound left turn lane. If they move everything towards the site, they're moving towards this cemetery. This is the cemetery right here. So this is going to be a challenge. Either you've got to straddle both sides or move it out towards the river and then you've got an even larger retaining wall that you've got to build to make enough room to make that work. Douglas mentioned the endangered flower that they had found on the city project to the west. That was a planned second connection, but we don't know when that's going to happen. And I think you can see... Forgive me, this thing takes a minute to catch up sometimes. See, the green is the proposed sewer route, which will follow their road. And this is, which would pretty much line up with their proposed road here. So potentially, there's a second connection, a second way out. But the endangered species was found just north of existing end of the current road. So that's got to work its way out, either be mitigated or the road moved or something. And where they found it, it's going to be a challenge to do that. Let's see. Utilities, back to 231. There is a big force main that comes from the landfill. This purple line, if you can see it, is the force main that collects the leachate from the landfill and that gets pumped back to the city sewage treatment facility. So they treat the leachate off of the Republic's landfill. So that's going to have to be lowered. We have a standard maximum landing at an intersection of 3%. So this steep drive up this hill is going to have to be flattened to make a level spot where cars coming out, they're not coming down on a steep embankment tying into 231. So that's going to be another challenge, lowering that big force main for the landfill and making this topography work. Little bit farther to the west is another force main that serves Walter Hill Elementary It follows that TVA, old TVA easement that the applicant was talking about. Hold on just a second. And you can kind of see the TVA easement on the old USGS quad maps. This black line was the old power line that used to run through here. But, let me turn that off. And then you look a little bit, it turns 90 degrees, it doesn't follow, continue to follow south. The city's showing this, taking a 90-degree turn and then heading due west along this tree line. So we need to make sure we know where that's at. We don't want the elementary school to lose its sewer service. So that's going to be a challenge there. But my biggest, I don't know, the biggest challenge for this will be the connection on the 231, making that work. Because you've got such a narrow area to work in with the added turn lanes and the Black Family Cemetery in this location. So you're kind of, like I said, between a rock and a hard place, trying to squeeze that in. And nothing's impossible, it's just going to be expensive. I can see a lot of retaining walls. I'm not a big fan of retaining walls. I don't know if y'all live Shebaville Highway, south of Murfreesboro. My insurance agent is behind a cemetery and a retaining wall. And I think it's a test to see if you're a good driver to get in and out, to visit him, to see if they'll insure you. So, sorry, that was bad humor.
You're fine. You were stressing me out over here, all the engineering I got to do.
Right. This is going to be, this is going to be, this is going to test your model, your engineering skill. This is going to be a challenge. There's a lot of things to consider here. The topography being one and the proximity of the river and the cemetery on the other side. So I'm sorry, I've rattled, but...
Mike, there's probably a lot of questions from commissioners, but let me just throw one out. You keep talking about rocks and hard places and challenges and challenges and challenges and then more challenges. If this were to pass contingent upon staff making sure all those challenges is met, what does that leave us as a commission? Commission, and this commission would like to see how that comes out.
I guess it would not move ahead without the planning and engineering staff's approval. It does not move to TDOT for their consideration and review. So we review it on the local level, try to hammer out all the issues we see. We approve it on our end and then it moves ahead. But things could definitely impact this development and possibly make things move around that y'all might see again.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that as well, and Mike's absolutely correct. Of course, any, even if this is approved, they're going to have to submit site plans, plaits, everything for our consideration. Now, the turn lanes, since the traffic study did recommend those, they're going to become part of the requirements of the planned development, the pattern book. So they couldn't just come back and say, well, you know, we've kind of done our analysis on this and it's just going to be too costly, we're not going to put them in after all. In order to do that, that's a condition of the pattern book at that point. They'd have to come back through and go back through this whole process again. So we wouldn't just say, ah, well, you know, you gave it your best shot, we just won't worry about it. I mean, we're not going to do that. So they would have to come back through this entire process for the rezoning to actually change the pattern book. So just to be, so that everybody that's watching may be aware, or who's here that may be aware that want to know, that, yeah, this won't be the last time that staff or the planning commission sees this coming before, back before you. And it's going to have to meet those standards that they outlined in the pattern book, including the turn lanes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Doug, with this being a PUD, if things do not work out and we've approved or allowed it to move forward here tonight and things do not work out because of turn lane challenges and other things, that reverts back to its original zoning, doesn't it? Or something like that because of PUD?
Not really. In order, now, the PUD can become inactive, but in order to change the zoning, it would require an act from the legislative body. Because rezonings are legislative acts. They can't just go away on their own. They have to be changed.
But the PUD would only be approved for what we've seen.
Exactly. Somebody wanted to come back and say, well, you know what, we're just going to do single family, we're not going to, about townhomes. They'd have to come back through this whole process as of amendment at that point.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir, David.
I have a question for Mike. Mike, is city sewer available to this property on the backside? And if it is, it would cut out our step system to make longer driveways in the front? And what is the plan for the four lane of 231 North?
The, I'm not sure if the city would serve this property or not. Maybe you could, have y'all connect, talked to the city?
The city has told us they will not.
Okay. They've really ratcheted back what they will serve. They've got limited availability left in their system. So unless you have a pre-existing agreement to be served, they will not serve you. So that, physically, yes, they could if the sewer was brought to the edge of the property. But without that agreement through the city, they would not allow that. And what were you talking about, the four lane on 231?
Yeah. Yeah, is 231 on any plan to be able to expand the lanes on it by the state?
David, it's Doug. It's on the county's plan, but it's also a state road, state federal road, which would mean it'd have to be a TDOT project. And I'm not aware of any plans at this point that they have for moving that project forward.
Okay, thanks.
Are I able to hit on a couple of comments?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Everything that Mr. Hughes said is applicable. We acknowledge it. There are items that we have looked at in detail. Speaking specifically on the turn lane, we understand that it's, there are difficulties with the design. And roughly, there's roughly 200 feet from our northern property line to where we are currently proposed for the access drive. So I believe there is room in there to do a right lane taper and not impact the Black Cemetery. But obviously, to prove that, we need to go through the study and do that engineering and do the analysis to look at that. I think if we do run into any issues, if we're looking at walls, I don't like walls either. We don't want to see that. If we do run into grading issues, there is always the option, I think, of moving that access drive further to the south. Right now, I believe, and I just flipped the book, looking left, we require 565 feet of site distance. There's over 625. So while I don't deny that there's vegetation, there's a slope and we have to confirm that it all, that it all does work with the final design, I believe there are options there for providing safe access. In terms of the force mains with the BFI, we are aware of that one and we will try at best to cross at grade in that location so that we do not disturb that force main. That said, we still need to confirm the exact location. At this point in time, just with the rezoning, all that we have done is a boundary survey to confirm that we're on our property and we do need to conduct the existing conditions to further identify all of the existing conditions on site. So we will need to identify the exact location of that force main and the depth to make sure that we do not disturb it. Or if it is an issue, we will have to investigate potentially lowering it. The force main that runs in the rear of the property, that services Walter Hill Elementary. I have made multiple calls trying to identify where that is because I personally don't believe that the location that is shown is where it is at. I believe that it is within the TVA easement. But if you look when it crosses into the property in the west where the endangered species was found, there is, back to 1997 aerial photography that shows vegetation. There's no cut path through it. That said, I believe that it does cut through the TVA easement from design plans that we've secured and also some as-built comments from Walter Hill that they provided. It's just a question of when it gets through, where we are proposing our units, where it goes. Now, that really shouldn't impact anything in our perspective because it's going through open space and through the step system area. So if anything, it might take out some of the soils that we were able to use. So noted that there are many engineering criteria, factors that we have to look at on this site and we will do so. I believe that's part of the next step and for tonight, really... And for tonight, really trying to just make sure that everybody is on the same page with the overall layout, the use, the idea and the vision of the development to secure the rezoning. And then we will follow the necessary processes and steps with submitting all of site plans so that the commission has its additional opportunities to review the details of the design.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. I have a question for Mike, and then I have one for the applicant.
Yes, Rhonda.
Mike, I apologize if you covered this in your comments. In the staff report, you indicated that you all were going to request a vision study, a site vision study for that access. Did you receive that?
Yes, we did. Yes. And that's what I was talking about. Let me pull that up again.
That was the KCI study that Mr. Hughes was citing.
Yes. If you can see on the screen, there's a person standing 14 feet off the edge of the travel lane in a yellow vest right here. And that's where they're measuring their site distance. What I'm saying is, I don't think that considers the addition of two turn lanes.
Right. Okay. I remember that point, but I just wasn't sure if that was that... I didn't type back to that vision study. Thank you. And then my question for the applicant is this. I know it's your job to design a product that your client has asked you for. My concern is this. I feel like you're trying to squeeze a little too much into the parcel with all of its obstacles that you're having to overcome. And I know that's your job is to engineer solutions, and I appreciate that. But I guess my question to you is, has there been any conversation with the client about other options? I know you settled on this one. This is the one you presented. But was there any serious discussion about a different type of development for this land? And primarily, the reason that I ask is around the parking. I live very near multiple townhome communities. They park on the street. You know, people are not going to use their garage. You've allowed for one car in a driveway, and that's just not realistic, you know? And so, you've got a three-bedroom home, and you're assuming this family is going to function on one vehicle. That's just not real world. And so, my question to you is, are there any other serious alternatives that you guys examined and rolled out? Because I can tell you, the plan as it's designed currently, I cannot support.
Yes, there have been multiple versions of the plan that we have looked at, most of them at higher densities than this one is shown. Through the multiple items that have been stated tonight, we reduced that to what you currently see. I think that with parking, that seems to be a common theme, and I'm not sure how we can increase the setbacks on the units in the front. What that essentially does is loses just shy of another two acres of good soils for the step system. That two acres translates into about 24 units. So, that would be a large reduction from us, for us. What I'm thinking is, is there an option where we just provide some additional spaces within the parking lots that we are currently showing? I think this... I think the three spaces there, again, to hit on a note that I said before, are evenly dispersed throughout. If we provide more spaces in those parking lots, would that be something that we think could help resolve the issue? I think we're trying to find... We hear everybody loud and clear parking's an issue, and we won't deny that. So, that's why we're trying to find the solutions. And we were thinking that two options with the increased setbacks in the rear where we could do it, and then the parking in the front where we couldn't, could be something that would be acceptable. Do we think that more spaces in the front portion in Phase 1?
I can only speak for myself. To me, it just feels like this plan doesn't work on this land. And if that means that you're going to lose 24 units, then I think you need to reevaluate whatever plan is going to work for you all. Because as much as your challenge is designing solutions for your client, our challenge is planning for the future and planning for these communities and how they're going to age. And that's always something that we stress to every applicant, is we want these communities to have viability long-term. We want them to be livable, walkable, usable, attractive communities 30 years from now. And so, that's what I'm striving for. And so, I know you talked about some of the other plans included higher density. Well, it was obvious in staff's notes that they recommended something even closer to 110 units. They felt like that was more probable for this land. So, even shaving off through 24, you still will exceed that number. So, I would really like to hear from the commissioners and what their thoughts are, but that's my view.
Thank you, Rhonda. Give it some thought. We'll conduct our public hearing and then open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number REZ 21-002, Stephen Pierce for NVR. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Anyone online? Seeing we're hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Now, additional questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Chip. I tend to agree with Commissioner Allen on this one. I think they're trying to do too much with too little. I still have a question back to Commissioner Kush's comment about parking and back to Mr. Pease on the actual road itself. I think we can do all we want to say, you know, don't park, but I think we know what people are going to do. And then who's going to regulate and manage getting the police out there and getting tow trucks out there to move it? So, I guess I'm back to the question, even if there are two cars parked on the other side of the street, can any type of vehicle related to safety or school be able to get in between with the road width that the applicant presented? Mike, you got an answer on that?
I would say no. You've got, by county standards, two 11-foot lanes, and then you've got a gutter pan on each side of one foot. So, essentially 12-foot for two lanes, so it's 24 feet. You've got a car taking up, you know, eight, nine feet of that. I'd say it'd be extremely difficult to meander through several parked cars with an emergency vehicle, school bus, trash truck, anything like that.
And that's my overall concern. I know we... Without a mandate of something that says no parking, you know, regardless, you put signs or whatever, people are going to do it. And they may not do it for a long time, but it doesn't take but one incident of not being able to get something through there that, you know, it's going to be back on us, you know, from my perspective. So, I mean, I do appreciate the plan, but, you know, I just... I agree with Commissioner Allen. I think this is too much for this piece of property.
Just to add something else, what Chairman Phillips had said, we... I saw an article in the Daily News Journal a few weeks back where the Department of Energy had studied houses with two-car garages. And of those houses that they studied, I'm not sure how many, because I haven't seen the full report, but 50% of the houses, you could not park a car in either garage. And of the remaining 50%, you could only get one car in there. So, parking a car in a garage is a hope at best.
Mr. Chairman.
Lee.
In its current configuration, I agree with Commissioner Pinion and Commissioner Allen. But I do think that there are some options that... I don't know the square footage of open space. If you can go to the... One of the slides in their PUD has the open space and usable open space. And I'm just wondering if, for future reference in this type of situation, there's the red area right behind... I think Phase 1 is the one that's really concerned us the most, because it has only room for one vehicle. But in looking at that area on the south side where the red open space area is delineated in Phase 1, go up, that thin red area between the parking space at the top and the roundabout, yeah, that whole red strip, that could really be looked at to turn into a HOA-maintained one-way lesser-quality county driveway of some sort to allow people to park behind their units and connect maybe to those parts. I'm just throwing out ideas here, or something that may work to...
You're talking like an alley-loaded product, something like that?
Yeah, an alley kind of way on that. If it doesn't affect their open space calculations, then they can landscape it and do what they need. But you almost have some options here that may be thinking outside of the box a little bit to promote that traffic not being on the main roadway that's a county roadway and have that access. And it could work on both sides possibly. I don't know the dimensions. We're looking at colored photographs or renderings non-dimensionaled. But, you know, that's something that just thinking in my mind would help tremendously on Phase 1. The Phase 2, you're providing a couple of parking places. But just thinking about those kinds of things, I think there's still some options here to make this work. But it's in its current configuration, it just feels too constrained. It feels like that the one vehicle in there, that it's... I can see the mail kiosk and the parking spots for overflow and everything else just becoming a constrained mess and scrambling around to try to find a parking place. So, just food for thought and, you know, just an idea that came to me. Thank you.
Kind of looking at our county attorney, our question that we should be asking ourselves tonight, does this piece of property need to be rezoned from a residential medium-density to a PUD as we see it? All the other stuff can or can't be worked out, but that's our question and our challenge tonight, because we're looking at rezoning. We're not really looking at a detailed plan. And that doesn't mean that the answer is yes or no. It might mean that the answer is no, simply because we don't think the planned PUD will work for this piece of property. So...
And in its current configuration, I agree with that.
It's current configuration, correct. Other questions? I'm not wanting to cut anyone off. And any other questions? Any other comments?
Applicant, I think, wants to speak again.
Do you have a question?
Yes, you may.
So, while there might be multiple comments on details that we have to work out, it really seems parking is the big one. So, the question is first, if, one, it sounds like right now there is unwillingness to support the current configuration. So, if we were to table tonight, is that a process that this board follows? If we tabled tonight, went back and looked at other options for parking? The second part of that is, if we can look at a way where we can add two spaces for the units in Phase 1, similar to what we did in Phase 2, would that be something that we would be seeing as a solution to the parking concern?
And I'll at least chime in in part, and Nick may want to, you know, jump in at some point. But the application before you, I mean, you've got... Basically, you've got three options. You can either recommend approval, you can recommend denial, or you can defer action on it, which is kind of what he was... The applicant was talking about as far as maybe tabling. If you just... And this gets back to what Jeff was saying. If you just don't think this property should be rezoned based on some of the discussion and reasons you had tonight, then the recommendation for denial is probably the appropriate thing to do. If you think that there may be a way to make this work with this similar-type product on a property, but maybe making some changes, deferral is probably a better option at this point. Of course, if you were okay with it, then you just make a motion to approve it, and it would go to the Board of Commissioners. But again, as you all know, this is a recommending body at this point, and a decision made here is not final. But to answer the question, can it be tabled? The planning commission can make a motion to defer this application? Yes.
And if that is the action that's taken tonight, again, we hear parking, but if there are any other items that we could be given direction on, so we make sure if it is deferred and we do come back, that we can make sure to address those as well. So, with that, thank you.
I would say the parking is the big thing, but also access to the property, you know, the comments that Mike had made. Of course, I know we've shared some of that with you already, but...
Yes, it is a construction plan item, but that is... This is so key to this project. I think it needs some more study.
If it makes some sort of a effect on the overall design, it may be such that it becomes something we can't disapprove administratively. It may become a major deviation. At that point, it has to come back anyway. So, you know, I would definitely look at those two things especially.
Okay. Thank you.
If the... If this commission moved to defer, what's going to be different when you bring it back?
We are going to look at options where we could push the front setback for the units in Phase 1 so that we could get two driveway parking spaces. We have to look at how that eats into the step system, but that is something we're willing to analyze and see how it affects the overall plan.
How about ingress and egress?
Ingress and egress, what we'll probably do is go out and do a conceptual plan and see how those lanes actually lay out, what the taper length would be to determine that that's a viable option for what we are currently showing.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allen, before we leave, I would like to say one thing.
Sure. Rhonda?
Thank you. I am extremely concerned about the amount of density that you're proposing for this much land. Based on staff comments, they feel like something closer to 110 units is more appropriate for this type of development, this use of this land. So, I'm extremely concerned about that. And I'm always concerned about longevity of the product materials that you choose. And so, from the standpoint of, you know, this being 100% siding, and again, we want a community that's going to age well, I would really like to see what you could do in terms of improving that. And I definitely want to see a minimum of two cars in every driveway, ideally with room for a third. Because if you've got, you know, two kids, let's say you've got two parents who drive, one teenager, and then you even have, you know, one guest, you're going to have parking on the street. And there's just not adequate facilities that have been described in any given way in this format to accommodate that. So, I think your only choice is really going to have to be reducing your density, and that may mean changing your product entirely. But I am perfectly happy to look at whatever you want to bring back. If it's your preference for us to defer, I'll just be surprised if you can get there from this plan. So, I just want to make sure that you're aware that there's multiple concerns in addition to just parking.
Thank you for the clarity in that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Rhonda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer, to give the applicants an opportunity to discuss their plan further with staff, giving heavy consideration to the items that we've mentioned tonight.
Especially parking, ingress and egress, and density.
Correct.
Very good. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Item REZ 21-002. Any other discussion? Caller, please, girl.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to defer carries. Thank you. Item 6AB, ORD 21-001, zoning ordinance amendments, section 1101Q, accessory dwellings... Item 6AB, ORD 21-001, zoning ordinance amendments, Section 1101Q, accessory dwellings units, and Section 1408D-2, major home-based businesses. This is coming from our planning staff. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. These amendments that we're bringing for you tonight were discussed at our last Planning Commission meeting. You'll probably recognize when we start talking about these. But the first has to do with accessory dwelling units, and then the second has to deal with the major home-based businesses. As you recall at our last meeting, the change to the ADU, accessory dwelling units, involves an increase to the area percentage of a by right attached ADU, which comprises a principal structure. Right now, the current regulation is 25%, and staff's recommendation is to bump that up to 50%. The amendments are also located within your agenda packets after the little descriptive memo I did, but just kind of shows you the specifics as far as how that change would look like. The second item is a change to the major home-based business, which would allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to make case-by-case decisions on a number of employees, business vehicles, and customer-client visits. As you recall, this language reflects what they already do for the amount of accessory storage space or whatever, detached accessory space that can be allowed to be approved at a Board of Zoning Appeal meeting for a major home-based business. So we're really just taking that similar-type language and plugging it into these other areas as well. So there wasn't much discussion about this at the Planning Commission. We did talk about it, answered some questions, but you'll see, again, the changes, the additions and the markouts and whatnot, and that's staff's recommendation. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this point. If not, a public hearing would be necessary, and then this will have to move to the full County Commission for their approval.
Thank you, Doug. You Commissioners will remember, we discussed this at our January meeting and asked Doug to bring it forward with his language changes. Now's the time to ask questions. If not, we'll hold a public hearing. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item, I'm sorry, 0RD 21-001, zoning ordinance amendments. Anyone wishing to speak for or against these zoning amendments changes, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners.
This is Chip. I make a motion to approve these, and I appreciate Doug and Mike's work on this.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. You get the second, gal?
I did not.
Who made the second?
David Jones.
Thank you.
David, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Holo's in favor of the motion to approve and forward to the full County Commission? Please say whoops. Caller, girl.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. These changes will go before the County Commission on March the 11th. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 22nd, 9:00 a.m., in this courtroom. Doug, you have anything?
No, sir, I have nothing further.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Doug.
Rhonda?
Yes, thank you. Doug, I wonder if it's worthwhile for us to consider, do we need to consider adopting a parking ordinance? You know, this seems to be an issue that comes up a lot. And so if we really want to discourage on-street parking, I don't know that an ordinance preventing on-street parking is the way to go, because then that's going to rely on people calling the Sheriff's Department to have somebody enforce it. So the path of least resistance is just creating the parking up front. And so I'm just curious to know, do you think that's anything that we should consider adopting or even examining to adopt into the ordinance?
You're talking about parking in the street? Is that what you're referring to, Rhonda?
I'm talking about, do we want to say, you know, that every home must have at least three parking spaces? If it's two in the driveway and one in the garage, we need to say that for every residential unit needs to have a minimum amount of parking.
Well, actually, in our zoning ordinance, we currently do have that. And let me, you know, I had it open just a little bit ago. Let me flip it. Here we go. In Appendix D of the zoning ordinance right now, we do have off-street parking requirements. For one-family, two-family detached dwellings, townhomes, et cetera, it's two spaces per dwelling unit. Multi-family, it's one and a half per one-bedroom, 1.75 spaces for two or more bedrooms, mobile homes, bed and breakfasts, semi-permanent, they've got several of them are on there. Now, what the ordinance is silent about, and this is, I think, what you're getting to, Ms. Allen, is nowhere in here do we say a garage can or cannot be counted as a parking spot. That is something that I think we could add into the ordinance for clarity. You know, it's one thing for us to sit here and say, well, you know, we don't allow that, but then if someone's reading the ordinance word-for-word, they're going to say, well, it doesn't say that anywhere in here. That may be something, and quite frankly, it'd probably be pretty easy to place in here. It would probably be something we put on this chart, Appendix D, or somewhere within the parking, off-street parking ordinance, which is part of Chapter 1102, 1102, 1103, I think. I think it's 1102. So that is something I think that could be, that would clarify that particular issue, because we see that fairly frequently. Someone's saying, I'm going to count this garage space, and then I'm going to have two spaces. And, you know, we've kind of recommended against that in the past with some developments. Of course, we haven't seen many of these type of developments, these townhome developments coming in, so this may be a good time to kind of revisit some of those parking standards for that very item.
Rhonda, would you like to see it happen?
If you don't mind, Doug, I'd like for you to take even a little bit of time to study it and decide what you think a fair recommendation would be, because first of all, you know what comes up in front of you, but you also know what's going on in the planning community in general. And so it just feels like something that comes up often enough that it's time to reexamine it.
Yes, ma'am. No, that would be, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Doug, I'm sorry. Chairman Mike Kush here with a quick question. Rhonda and Doug, this dovetails also with your discussion you brought up about further need or a topic to discuss about a minimum lot width. This kind of plays hand-in-hand with that. So I'm very much in support of Rhonda's idea, but I think you can talk about both topics at the same time.
Sure. And I think we could even get, you know, our Highway Superintendent, Greg Brooks, involved as far as the parking on the street issue. You know, I know that's something we've talked with him about in the past, and he's spoken at Planning Commission before, but it'd be good to have his input as well.
Yeah. You know, I think if any one of us would drive through any major subdivision, we will see the issue.
Let me say something to that quickly, Mike. You know, I've got two neighborhoods very close to me that are quite similar, and in one of them, the way they designed it is a lot like what Lee was talking, where there's, you know, the back-loaded alleys. So you may have some visitors who park on the street, but everybody's driveways and their garages enter from the back anyway. So it's just naturally designed that way. So it's a pretty neighborhood, even though it's all, you know, townhomes. It's a very pretty neighborhood, the way they have it designed in terms of that entrance, you know, coming in. Equally, I have another community that's not too far from me, where they provide very little parking. Everything's on the front. There's a million cars in the road. You know, fortunately, they built the roads wide enough to accommodate that, so traffic's still able to pass through, but it's not desirable. It's not the desired outcome. When you think about good planning, I can't imagine that you would sit down and say, yeah, this is what we want it to look like. So there is a way to do this, and there is a way to do it well. And if we need to help guide people along the way by working some of this into our ordinance, then I think we need to do that.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I, as Chip, I agree with both Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Kush said, but I would like, if it's not too much, as well, Mike, and again, that we may engage Mr. Brooks, but look at the overall, you know, road width in our subdivisions for our county standard. Even if we don't allow parking and, you know, whatnot, to me, that still is a tight, is tight quarters regardless, especially when you've got structures that are so close to the road and buildings so close to the road, even with what this gentleman proposed with, you know, two cars, 40 feet plus. To me, it's still cramped, and just to the naked eye, it's just not very desirable. So I'd even like to see that looked at as well, if it's not too much to ask, if we could, you know, evaluate that, just the overall minimum requirements for road width.
Right. That's, I agree. And the number of spaces per bedroom, you know, in our transportation-oriented world that we live in, you know, you've got three bedrooms and one spot for a car out in front of a driveway and maybe one in the garage, you know? I guess you can't have a teenager with a license, but that's just me.
Good comments, everyone. Really good. Anything else? Rhonda said, take your time. You've got a couple of weeks.
Sure.
You know, take your time.
That should, honestly, looking at that kind of stuff that Rhonda was talking about, that, I mean, I've got other staff as well, and they, we'll tackle that. We should be able to at least have something for you at the next meeting. If nothing, not a full statement, maybe preliminary, just to give you an idea of what we found.
Well, if you want to parlay it into a work session, we would probably be okay with that, too.
Yeah, we'll see where it all goes.
Once again, thank you for your attendance and your consideration for the agenda items tonight. We appreciate you guys. With that, we are adjourned.